Ready to go. This is Thursday, March 9th, 2017, the Situate Planning Board hearing. We have an agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Starting off with a public hearing for accessory dwelling permit, Three Garden Road. Are you good for that? Please come up and grab a seat. Accessory dwelling, okay. Why don't you introduce yourselves and give us a little overview of what you're looking for?
Sure. So, I am Patrick Farr. This is my wife Emily Farr. We live at Three Garden Road here in Situate. And, yeah, so we're just looking for a accessory dwelling special permit.
Okay. Can you give us a little more background on that?
Oh, sure. I mean, I've a...
Are you looking for...
Just give me an overview of what it is, what you have now, and what you're proposing to do.
Okay.
I feel like I could talk here for about 45 minutes of what's going on, so...
Well, the five-minute version would be good.
Sure. So, this is an interesting case where the dwelling is already... We first bought our house, we had an old dilapidated, separate detached two-car garage. It's in the same dimension that this new proposed two-car garage is in. That has been torn down by permit, and the new dwelling that you guys all see in front of you is fully up, built. I have the building permit to do it right here. It adheres to all easement requirements for our property. We had all the property measured by Morse Engineering and everything. And, yeah, so in order to get the building permit that I have right here, I was instructed by a few people, obviously the building department, to... First, I brought them the plans that you see in front of you, which, you know, if you just quickly look at it, you can see...
Is this what you're talking about?
Yes, yep. On page two, or, you know, two, you can clearly see that, you know, there's a living space above the two-car garage, all that good stuff. I was, you know, no one strong-armed me or anything, but directed to change what looks like a bedroom into an exercise room by putting a treadmill there, changing the island and the kitchen into a desk. Therefore, so I wouldn't, you know, pay the $500, have to go through this process, you know, wait a couple Thursdays, the whole, you know, advertise in the newspaper and everything. So, I was also advising you that, he said, my, the designer who designed this says it's not uncommon to, for, you know, people to do this. So, that's where we ended up to get this building permit. It's like I said, the structure's already up. It adheres to all the easement requirements of our property. There's rough plumbing and rough electrical in the structure now. I have sign-off of the rough electrical by the electrical inspector. And then, we were attempting to get sign-off by the plumbing inspector. He came in and basically said, "You guys don't have a accessory dwelling permit. There's obviously a kitchen here, you know, it's all plumbed for a kitchen, bathroom, all that good stuff." And that's when we decided to go down this road, obviously the right road to go down.
So, to add to that, we're here today to apply for the accessory dwelling special permit. It's pretty much just a box that's built. Nothing is inside of the unit. We're hoping to turn it into a one-bedroom, one-bath for my parents to live in in the summer.
It's an in-law apartment for her parents.
All right. Laura?
No, it's more than five minutes.
That's good. Thank you.
It does meet most of the dimensional, well, all the dimensional requirements. It's 672 square feet. It's below the 750 square feet. It does conform to the side setbacks. But I guess where, you know, a couple of issues have come up is that when a special permit is required, the planning board's required to notify all the abutters within 300 feet to see if there's any impact on them. And we did get, I think you got a fairly strong letter from one of the abutters who feels like this is right in her backyard, and when you go to her backyard, it is like right across the property line from her backyard. So, I think the idea of kind of doing a little dance with the permitting is maybe not something that the planning board, you know, I'm gonna let them speak to that.
Oh, sure.
It does have an effect on the neighborhood because when people don't know that this is, you know, permitted as an accessory dwelling, there are a lot of concerns. And when that permitting hasn't happened, the planning board really has no say about, you know, gee, well, there's an eight-foot setback in the R3 zoning district. If you're building a two-story building there and you've got a 15,000-square-foot lot, maybe there was a little flexibility there, and that flexibility's now gone. So, I think there's some concern there. But otherwise, there's some, some things that you'll also have to take care of, like there will be a sewer connection that you'll have to pay for. There may be, if you're gonna have a separate water meter there, there would be, you know, some fees connected with that also. And I should mention that there's a separate driveway that comes in from Hadley Road. This property has driveways from two different directions now, from two different roads, which also gives it a little more of like a two-unit-on-one-lot kind of feel to it.
Is there an existing curb cut there?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
The house physically is here, and the garage is located back here. The first driveway to the house is the circular driveway.
It's a half, like a half-moon type.
You can see right there.
Yep.
And then, the other one is, basically looks to be what was originally the access to the garage in the back.
Correct. Yep.
I find, and I think the Farrs already know how I feel, I find all of this really somewhat sad because the Farrs have been put, in my opinion, in an untenable position because they were misadvised by the building department. And if the building department had told them to do, in point of fact, the right thing, this could have been...
I didn't understand that this was advice given by the building department as opposed to your architects that did all this?
But also from the building department, that this was the best route for them to take. If, and as Laura has just pointed out, if they had taken the special permit route, we could have had them move this dwelling down so that it wasn't right on, within eight feet of the property line. It is a big lot. It's a 10,000-square-foot district, and it's a 15,000-square-foot lot. We have, in point of fact, two dwellings on one lot. And I really feel torn. I really do because this is a special permit. And I think that the culpability here, in point of fact, is not with the Farrs. They were given total and complete misinformation by this town hall. And I'm just gonna... We're having people talk, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Takes three minutes to get over my shot.
Yeah, we're shocked, really.
Yeah, how long have you owned the house?
We bought it in June of '24. So, this year, it'll be three years.
Oh, okay. What was the motivation? Was the motivation to put in an accessory dwelling when you started a replacement of the garage?
When we bought the house to start three years ago, this garage, the existing detached garage was in such poor condition that it wasn't even factored into the value of the house. You know, there's a visible hole in the roof that water would pour through, and so, unusable. So, yeah, to start, we wanted a usable, more modern garage. And, yeah, her parents live in, full-time in Scottsdale, Arizona. We recently had a, 14 months ago, had a baby. We have another one on the way. And they, her parents, have always dreamed of having, you know, being the snowbirds from when it's 120 degrees there. They wanna come to Situate, who wouldn't really in the summer, and get to know their grandkids, and say yes. So, it was gonna be an in-law apartment for them from the start.
What's the building, you're in a storage unit that's off to the left as you go up the driveway?
Oh, it's a shed.
Is that gonna stay? Does that go?
I think it's gonna stay. It's in good condition.
I assume, Laura, I just did a quick check, but I did all the dimensions are correct?
Yes. And they've got plenty of parking because they've got parking in the garage, and then they have parking on the other side.
No, I was just concerned in terms of the setbacks.
Yeah, it's actually a nine-foot setback, and there's an eight-foot setback required, so it's fine.
Nice looking garage.
No, thanks.
Great view.
And it's nice that you took, added a little lean-to so that you could take care of the boat.
Yeah. It was, I thought to be well-thought-out, but here we are. So, we'll see.
I'm all set for it.
Thank you.
Reggie?
I don't have a lot. I mean, it is, it's a good-looking building, and it's, meets the criteria, setbacks and everything. Yeah, I don't have a lot of questions, or any questions, really.
The building permit was issued for this with the expectation that the upstairs was not an accessory dwelling, correct?
Uh, yes. On this building permit, I reread it today, so...
I mean, they wouldn't have issued a building permit for something that was an accessory dwelling.
Garage, new two-car garage with office space above, is what it says here.
Office space.
Yep.
Well, I have to agree with Ann. This feels to me like the asking-for-forgiveness-as-opposed-to-permission approach to things, and it completely cuts the planning board out of the process, and the abutters who should legitimately have some voice in this process, it cuts them out as well. And we're left with what is built, and then a request to convert it. So, I fully agree with you there that this is, this is the absolute wrong way to do But given where, I don't know anything about who gave who advice.
Yeah.
And, you know, at the end of the day, we, we're not privy to any of those conversations. All we have is what we have to look at here. So, I don't have any other questions. I assume there's two means of egress out of this facility?
Yes.
How do we get out?
So...
I saw the stairs as the deck, the other.
Exactly, yes. So, there's stairs off, coming off the deck to the ground, and then, looking at the structure to the left, they also adore you. Yep.
And this is, this is intended to be a single bedroom?
Correct.
Before we get into any other discussion, is there any comments from the, from the public here? Okay. What's the board's pleasure here?
You want the rock or the hard place?
That's right. And that's why I am so frustrated, and this makes me so incredibly sad because it did not need to happen this way. It did not need to happen this way. And I am outraged that this happened this way, and it is, I really feel it is not their fault. And do we have them suffer the slings and arrows of something that, I mean, you look at this plan, and the treadmill looks like a bed, and this is what was given to the department, the building department. And as we said, and you heard me say, and, you know, if it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. And this tells me that that was an apartment, and they were advised to take the path of least resistance and then spend their money later. I do not hold them, in one sense, and I understand, you know, saying mea culpa at the end, gee, we didn't know, but do we make them suffer for something that really... I mean, I was all set to come in here and say, "No." But under the circumstances, because they were forthcoming with what they feel is the truth.
Well, I tend to agree with you where we're between the rock and the hard place. Someday, we're gonna have to draw the line here.
Well, it may be drawn tonight, dear.
But, you know, we can't...
We can't punish these people.
If we don't, I think the problem is, right, that we can make a lot of noise about it, but if it continues to happen until we draw the line on it, it'll continue to happen. And I'm not suggesting that we do that tonight. I'm just suggesting that we have to think about that one.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, nobody had the opportunity to have input to this as an accessory dwelling, which is what you always intended it to be, regardless of what the building permit says. And I think that's wrong. It's not in keeping with the spirit of the, of the town bylaws, and we need to find a way to rectify it in the future.
We tried to do that three years ago at 1:30 in the morning, and that did not happen. So, we'll just have to try again. But I think there needs to be a chat with, down the hall.
Can I just add something for a minute? I, we apologize for having to put you guys in this place, and we respect whatever you decide. Like Patrick mentioned, we've only lived here three years, and we thought we were following correct instructions. We're small business owners. We own Quench in the harbor. We're, I mean, we own a small-sized home. We're not trying to beat around the bush, and I just genuinely apologize that we're all in a tough spot.
Well, thank you for that. I think it is a difficult situation, and unfortunately, people have adopted sort of the workaround approach to things here, and we've seen it a few times, are not appreciative of it. And I understand the situation that you may be in as well.
I don't think it was their intent. I really don't.
I would agree with you.
All right, enough said. Do we have a motion, please?
Four, well, just handing that out. Is there any way that you can think of that you could actually shield the lower portion of those stairs from the property line?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
You're nine feet off on the property line. The question is, if I'm coming down the stairs...
Which stairs are you talking about?
The back.
The back stairs.
Okay.
Okay, and then, I guess it's, what's the yellow house?
Holly?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any shielding that you can do between those stairs and that wall, the property line?
Are you, so if you're looking at, I'm sorry, I'm not following you. If you're looking at the structure on the left or in the, off the deck...
As you're coming down from the apartment...
Okay.
...accessory dwelling, you're coming down the stairs.
Yeah.
One of the concerns is the woman that's made, is that it's peering into her house.
Oh.
So, the question becomes, is there anything...
This is from her driveway, get the stairs...
Yeah, this is, this is from...
That's her over here, right?
Yes.
It's from over here, yeah. It comes, comes down, comes down, right down here. So, the question, is there anything, any kind of shelter, whether it's lattice work, whether it's plantings or...
Yeah, I mean, we, we would definitely be open to doing something like that if it's, I understand why she's frustrated, and she's our neighbor, so they're talking about opening. Definitely.
And the sooner the better.
So, what is it, I'm not sure what you're suggesting here, so...
What he's suggesting is, behind her shed, she has a porch over here, and feels that when people come out this back door and come down, they're looking right at her. And what we need to do, or somebody needs to do, is put some type of buffer behind it so that even if you were to take up above at the landing and put a piece of lattice...
Yeah.
So that when someone walks out the door...
And is facing that direction?
Yes.
Yeah, that makes...
I'm sure my parents would like that also.
Right. You know, it's, because all the lots are, you know, fairly close together.
For the wintertime, I would guess, right?
Right.
It looks like this tree would lock it in.
Right, but in the wintertime.
It's really open from the back, from the back of the shed here.
Yep.
The property line is open, so there's, there's room to put stuff, whether it's a planting to keep it from the lower level, or that. I'd have to go up, down the stairs to see at what point you start looking into the house, and that would be, you know...
I suspect it's the upper level that's the problem, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, she's right.
Earlier you get down...
When you come out that door, you can see into her, you know, backyard or whatever. I think something would definitely help that.
But it would be, it would be no different than if the person who wrote the letter, King, took her ranch, got a small ranch, and she put a second floor on it. You'd have the problem.
So, what are you thinking?
I'm a popular mechanics guy. Everything I think of is yellow and green. Whoever designed it spent, spent a good time designing it, and I think it needs something that's an integral part of that house.
Yeah, you wouldn't wanna, wouldn't wanna sort of root Goldberg it, you know?
No.
I think a piece of lattice, kind of on two sides of that upper landing would look aesthetically not, in white to match the trim.
And we can go back to the architect and see what he suggests.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we leave it a bit open-ended as just some kind of permanent screening, right?
Right.
Laura could be a representative on that team.
All right. What do you got?
I move to make the following findings a fact. According to the town of Situate's assessors' records, the property at Three Garden Road is owned, Emily, owned by Emily M. and Patrick Farr. The property is located in the residential R3 district. The lot area is 15,000 square feet. Two, on February 14th, 2017, Emily and Patrick Farr applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling within a detached garage at Three Garden Road. Three, a building permit was issued for a two-car garage with office space above on 8/15/2016. Four, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the interior floor space of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately 672 square feet. This meets the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings, and it is less than 750 square feet. The five, the primary dwelling was built in 1925 and contains 1,100 square feet according to the assessors' records. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is 61% of the floor area of the primary dwelling. It is greater than the 40% is allowed in the bylaw, but under the size of 700 square feet, as noted in finding four. Six, the plan shows the accessory dwelling to have a two-car garage, which will provide two onsite parking spaces for the accessory dwelling. A one-car carport is also attached to the garage. There is a driveway off Hadley Road for parking for several cars for the accessory dwelling, and a driveway off Garden Road with parking for two cars for the primary dwelling. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Seven, the owners have submitted a signed notarized statement that they will live on the property. Eight, the property has been on town sewer since 1973. The applicant indicates that they can install a connection to the sewer line on the property. Nine, there exists, there are, there are exterior stairs to the accessory dwelling on the sides of the house. Ten, the application meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit.
Move to findings a fact.
All those in favor? Oh, we need a second first.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I, yeah, I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at Three Garden Road with the following conditions and standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after a public hearing on 12/17/15.
What?
Those are the standard conditions that you approved.
Okay. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled "Permit Set Patrick and Emily Farr by Fitzgerald Design", Sheets 1 of 9 through 9 of 9, and site plan for proposed accessory building, Three Garden Road, Assessors Map 34-22-1, 2 and 3 by Morse Engineering dated 7/22/16. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Four, the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board shall be conditions of this decision and shall be included for the record, for recording at the Registry of Deeds. Do we want to put plantings in here?
Yes. I think we want to indicate that it should be permanent screening.
Yes.
Right?
Permanent screening.
To be installed through consultation with town planner.
And you want that up at the landing?
Yes.
At the top, where you walk out the back door?
Yep.
Right.
All right.
That works.
That works. What number are you going to give this house? Because it also is on Hadley Road. Is it going to be 3A, Garden Road, or what number will you give it?
I think they have to get that from the DBW.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, fine. Just curious.
I hadn't thought about it.
Yeah, I think it's something you probably should think about.
Yes. You want to get mail there.
Number on for fire protection and all that good stuff.
I think we also got a note from the Board of Health that suggested it was required to meet specific requirements, right?
Conditions of the state.
Conditions, right. But that's covered.
Standard conditions.
Right, standard conditions, okay. Okay. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
As amended. All those...
All those in favor?
Aye.
So...
Why don't you flip it around and put, put the lean-to on the property side, the property line side?
The carport?
Yeah.
Great question, and the simple reason, the simple answer is this exact plot. Originally, we were grandfathered in, the original structure did not meet all the easement requirements. So, because we put a second floor on, we had to move it to, to conform to those easements, and this is the exact plot of the old garage, complete with the carport on that side, so that's kind of what we went with.
Yeah. Stuck with the footprint of that.
So, this was not easy.
I agree.
It was not easy.
Hoardly.
And it never, ever should have come to this.
Ever.
Ever. And you can't be held, I can't punish you for what someone else did.
Thank you very much for being understanding.
Thank you. Okay.
At some point, we gotta put a somebody for it. At some point, it's gotta stop.
Unfortunately, somebody's gonna end in the barrel at one point.
It's too bad, but it's, like, I agree, it's not their fault.
I mean, it's a logical place, and it fits right where it should on that line.
Yes. But the thing is, if, if they were given better information from that building department...
They could have made changes beforehand.
That's right.
I understand.
And so, they were misled.
Okay, let's move on.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I can't help it.
I think we have Patricia here? Yes. This is the discussion about the proposed imposition of Director of Planning and Development. We have our... Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, ladies. Good evening, thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah.
So I have reached out to all the development boards to share with them a recommendation that I've given to the Board of Selectman and Advisory Committee for the FY18 budget, which is the creation of a Director of Planning and Development position. And I've attached, actually excerpted, excerpted from my budget message, the rationale for that. I think Laura's included some information for you previously, but I have the job description as well as how we're funding it in the budget, and an extensive list, two pages, three, almost two and a half pages of this position existing.
Yeah, we appreciate getting all of the data. Thank you.
We're a member of the Mass Personnel Association, so we have access to a wide variety of data. So a number of reasons for recommending this position, and then I want to make sure I focus on where the funds are coming from. I think our development offices do a really good job, and I think, you know, as one of the review boards, you know that the workload's increased. But at the same time, we've been able to do some wonderful stuff in the past few years relative to economic development, coastal issues, open space plan, the work goes on and on. And as much as the development team works together and meets every two weeks to review development, a lot of the work's done in a silo, you know, and despite our best efforts, a lot of times communication sometimes gets thwarted or broken down. And so I think there's an overarching need for someone whose particular job and mission is to coordinate all those departments, to make sure we speak with one voice, and also provide an opportunity for developers and residents to have a go-to person to resolve issues. I'm preaching to the choir that our land is becoming more and more marginal. The challenges for the Conservation Commission and under our zoning for development, I think, are going to continue to increase, and I think we need someone, in addition to the talented staff we have, someone outfitted by education experience to do that, with a particular focus, again, on economic development and development. The other thing I want to make really clear is the position is revenue neutral, even though it's my number one and only priority in this budget, which is a level service budget. We have funds made available because we used two FTEs in the building department, a full-time building commissioner and a part-time, full-time local building inspector. And with the retirement of Neil, who's come back to us on a part-time basis, that's a 1.5, so we can pick up that 0.5. We eliminated a position in the building commissioner's office, which was a part-time clerk, very part-time. She's moved over to become the records clerk in the police department. And I honestly forget what the third piece is. Oh, most important, to ensure that this person has a focus on economic development, which Laura and the Economic Development Commission have really been carving out to do the work that we've done the last few years, to really focus on the wonderful work that they've done. We've spent a lot of money, they've really gotten their seed legs now in terms of getting some concrete plans and visioning, and someone should make sure that's not a shelf plan. We've had MAPC studies and marketing studies, and that position would be focused with that as well. So the rest of the funding is coming from reduction in the Economic Development Commission budget. So it's revenue neutral. The position would start in September, so it's 9/12 funded. And the other thing that this would require is it's going to be a separate article at town meeting, because the charter directs that all department heads report to the town administrator. That's 23 people, and not sustainable. And so this would take the direct reporting authority for those individuals in conservation, building, and planning, and put it to the Director of Planning and Community Development. So that is a provision for that in the charter, it's called a change in the administrative code, and that would be a separate article. And the only other thing I want to say is, as you know, I reached out to all of you. I've spoken with Frank Snow, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, he's very much in favor of this. And I met with the Chair of the EDC, Ms. Burbine, and Colin McNeese, who is here, who also strongly support it. So I wanted to make sure I spoke with the planning board, to make sure we have a unified front at town meeting and that I wasn't just going off half-based. Slekman Dennehy's here as well, so I'll turn it over to him.
Sure. Well, she pretty much covered everything. But I think, you know, in the eight years that Tricia's been here, I've been always been pushing for a position of this nature. Rick Murray was also on the board at the time, we're talking about economic development, what have we needed to do? Obviously, we reached across the planning board, Bill, you were here, and Dan Monger at the time was sitting here, and we said, we need to think about EDC. And the idea being with development, how you do with business, but also having gone back, and Bill, you were on the zoning board with me, and I know Anne, you were in the planning board back in the 2000s, there was a lot of development, a lot of big-scale items. We ended up doing the smart plan and green initiatives and all these things, and then development stopped because of the downturn of the economics. So I think we're at a really great point in time where we can now begin to say, okay, we decided to go forward with a coastal resource officer because of all our needs on the coastline, which is really really a lot of things. And then you end up with all the land that we have in the West End through the CCC, and how do we conserve it? How can we loop that in with some form of trails? And also, we've done a great deal with bike trails. And then we had a sidewalk program to try to think about how we're going to complete some of these sidewalks in conjunction with the road plan. So from my standpoint, I've always looked at this and said, we really need like a hub of all that information going from the various departments, not just planning, because you know what you do in planning, you're covering a lot of areas that are really more of the administrative stuff, processing applications. But you look back and you say, when's the last time you really had an opportunity to kind of dig in deep to your master plan? You know, and you say, right now, we're going to be taking a look at, we're doing it again going forward. You know, I think from a planning standpoint, we want to go back and take a look at these plans and say, where are we on course with it? You've been busy with a lot of things. Same thing happens in conservation. They're dealing with a lot of issues with homeowners needing these things. And of course, like I say, with the seawalls and conservation in the West End. And so I think this planning position, development position, is really going to like pull those strings together. And the EDC coming out with the plans in Green Bush, but more importantly, North Situate, and how we have this issue with sewer, what are we going to do with sewer? This person's going to be really able to kind of like talk to all of us together, and when some plan or applications may be filed, the building under the zoning, you know, we're going to be able to kind of see how the importance of maybe streamlining some of the application process through planning, through conservation. So I think from my perspective, this is a well-needed position. I think the other key is this, you know, even look at the various departments, people have been retiring. You know, at some point, you know, this is a great opportunity for somebody to get in, get experienced further by looking at what the town needs and what the town wants, and that we can put it to the residents to say, this is what we really like. You know, social media, we hear a lot going on about what's happening here, what's happening there. Whether you agree or don't disagree, at least it's telling you something, and I think it's always great to kind of look back and hear it, but it gives them an opportunity to get involved. And I see this position as a, as a long-lasting position, because as the land is now becoming more green, redevelopment's happening. The land's no longer, shall we say, open space for development. Now we're going to be looking at areas and saying, what do we envision for the next 50 to 700 years? So I think we can look around at various communities, I know people will say some things, and they think that they're telling us something that we haven't already heard, and I'm sure you've heard that many times, but I see that's what this position's going to be able to do, and I fully support it. I think the key that people have to understand is that we're not creating just another position for the sake of creating a position. First, the funding source, it's net revenue, you know, neutral. So it's not like we have to go out and ask for raise more taxes for it or not. And I think the other thing is, is that we're getting an expertise of the planning going forward. DOR was here in 2015 and said, you know, this is a part of the structure that town really should take a look at. And so I think, you know, a lot of people complain about all these plans, and we don't do anything, although I disagree with them on it, they seem to hear plans, but, you know, we are going forward with it, but it gives your board, all the other boards, an opportunity to utilize it. And so I see this as a really good thing for the town in the future, and hope that the planning board would see the same value that we do. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you for that. You know, just as a kind of an initial kickoff of this conversation, I have to tell you the thing that struck me was the 23 direct reports. I think that's probably unwieldy, if not just completely unmanageable at times. And the notion of trying to tackle that issue, and if it's with these particular, in these particular areas, I think it's, it's well worthwhile to evaluate and try to, try to address. I can't imagine trying to do 23 direct reports, so I think that the notion of trying to bring all of these disparate but connected activities together and coordinate them is great. I would hope that the coordination is focused much more on proactive work than reactive work. And, you know, in the same respect, I would also hope that, you know, from a planning perspective, that, that, you know, we're, the planning board is still expecting to address the master plan, and we've, we've set that as part of our goals for this year and next. And, you know, to be able to coordinate all these different organizations in to help do that would be quite helpful. I do have a question about it, and I know probably everybody else has questions here too, but when you looked at creating this position, which sounds to me like it's a necessary position, was it also evaluated that you would just take one of your existing positions and sort of recreate it and then add, you know, add maybe a lower-level resource as opposed to creating a higher-level job, you know, on top of all of the other sort of organizations we have here? Because it seems to me there's like two, two options there, right? You need more resources, where do you need it, right? And we've, at least at the planning board, we've seen kind of over and over again that, that, you know, there is a need for additional support in the planning organization. So I just, I'm interested if you sort of look at both sides of that equation.
Yeah, I mean, I actually, it's an excellent question, Steve, because I wrestled with it. You know, we could use more support staff in every single department in this town, but as I note here in the narrative, EDC has asked for a staff person, not last year, but I believe the first two previous budgets. Laura's asked for an assistant town planner and an audubusman in this budget. Laura and Patrick in Conservation have asked for an enforcement officer that we were able to address, and that is included, very, very part-time, but we started it last year and we want to continue that. And, you know, I think you don't want to have too many managerial employees when there's nobody left to do the actual implementation. But in terms of being proactive, to your point, and also having someone at 10,000 feet looking at all of them with their primary mission, to do policy and work with you and conservation, and, you know, foreshore protection and all these land use issues, I think that was the way to go. And, you know, I can't manage 23 people well, and so...
Well, I'm not, I'm not throwing any stunts there. I think you do an excellent job, so I just think it's a tremendous talent, challenge, having been in many managerial positions myself to...
Right.
To manage 23 people.
And it was, and my point was not that, oh, wow, you have 23 people, but this lends itself to creating that change in organizational structure much more naturally, especially with Neil's retirement. And the other thing that I didn't mention is we are going to have retirements in the next two or three years in those departments, some of those departments, one for sure.
Right.
And we need to begin to create that organizational history in depth now before, you know, those people leave us forever.
Yeah, that's always a challenge, yeah. I will turn it over to the rest of my colleagues here. Questions, Colin?
Well, I'm on EDC, and EDC has been an advocate of this for a very long time. Colin McNeese has been on the EDC from the beginning. My concern in terms of being proactive is that whoever, whoever is in charge of these different bailiwick's that will be overseen by this person, they really need to know what they're doing so it doesn't come back to haunt us. We had that situation here this evening, and it makes it...
Yeah, if they can fix that situation, that would be a great start.
I'm sorry, I didn't know, but I'll follow up.
You know, really, when people issue permits, that, we need people who have credentials, we need people who know what they're doing, and sometimes we need to pay them to know what they're doing. And then you have somebody that's doing the oversight, which is terribly important, so that they can implement this. We have to talk to each other, not just through emails, but face-to-face. And so if you have Mr. Smith or Mrs. Smith, or whomever it is, that is overseeing all of this, they need to have meetings to talk to these people and ensure that a permit isn't given that shouldn't be given, that rules are followed, enforcement takes place, that town hall becomes more of a user-friendly place. I hear too often that it's, it's, it's not easy up here. And we've even seen on the planning board that people will come before us, one minute they have what they need, and the next minute it has been withdrawn by another department. You're right, there are silos. We need to talk to each other, we need to go forward. And I also agree with you, Tricia, we need more boots on the ground. We really do. You can have as many generals as you want, but unless we have those boots, where are we going and how are we going to get there? Maybe this will help to coordinate a lot of this, and I think it's important, and I will support you at town meeting for this. But I hope you can gather together the department heads and ensure that when they are replaced, they have the credentials.
Well, I think one of the things is, I think people who are building in town and developers, along with residents, need to have a form of redress, and they don't really have that now. And that's something that I've been sensitive to, to the last few years, for someone to really do some mediation and conflict resolution. And, you know, obviously, we have the boards involved in the selection process or whatever, but I think the qualifications established in the job description sort of set the bar high for that.
I hope so, because they pay our bills. They're the taxpayers, we work for them. We're volunteers, but everybody needs to feel that the planning...
It's not really a stiff bill.
No, yeah, I mean, that's why we get paid the big bucks, and half the town things we want to take, but that's neither hand or there. But at any rate, we do the best we can, but we are volunteers, and we need the support from the support staff, and we need to have the support staff do what they need to do and not be afraid to make a decision and to stand by that decision. And if we have someone that's overseeing all of this, that frees you up to do what you need to do in terms of managerial, I think we'll all be better off. Thank you.
My turn to join the choir.
Amen?
Yeah, I think, I think we're right where we need to be, only we should have been here like two years ago. But we're getting there, and I think, let me, as I kind of walk through the town, and hard to imagine that same thing happens to you guys, is you get comments from various people sitting here saying, what's this all about? What's that all about? What's that big building up on 3A?
Even now, what's that building up on 3A?
Three weeks ago, I had a woman come up and ask me what the building was up on 3A. But anyway, one of the questions that comes up is, are we really creating an assistant town administrator?
No, absolutely not. Typically, and there's lots of assistant town administrative positions in the Commonwealth, they're mostly charged with facilities and HR and finance. You rarely see them doing building and development.
Well, I'm just saying, that's a question that's been asked. The other question, and we've hit on both sides of me here about it, Ed, is, is the, would the money and the effort associated with this be better spent with beefing up the sub-tending departments?
I'm sorry?
Another, it's augmenting the departments' employees, whether it's in building or planning or other ones. You know, I, Bill, I'll tell you, I don't think so. And I, the reason why I say it is, and it's not that, I know you used the word that working in silos, I just think, you know, each of the departments work extremely hard. We get stuck on FEMA, and all of a sudden, everything's dropped to deal with the issue of FEMA maps and flood maps and being able to appeal it. And so all of a sudden, these departments are stopped, literally, at halt, to deal with it. Next moment, another crisis comes into play. And I just think that, you know, what this, what this does is, the person who has more of the vision, you talk about the proactive, that's exactly what we need. You know, the big issue we're going to be looking at is sewer's going to be phased in the next phase, or is it going to go to North Situate? That's a really big decision. That could be a huge growth development for North Situate. So that can, you know, a lot of people are going to want to chime in on that. We really need somebody who's going to be taking a look at that vision of like, what do we do? Green Bush is the next growth area for the next 50 to 75 years. And I just see this as like, you know, an opportunity where everybody can take a look, or not everybody, this position can really like pull those strings together and say, this needs to be dealt with, this needs to be dealt with, and keep going. And, you know, when you're dealing with a master plan, or whether you're dealing with beaches, and a beach committee now is having all these types of plans, you're going to pull it all together. I think if you're to get more of the workers, maybe in the future, it may come to that. You're going to need to begin to augment, but hopefully with more development, more tax revenue, business revenue, the town will be able to then shift up further with more employees. I just think, I think for answering a lot of the question, well, you're always going to run into somebody who hasn't been paying attention to things and ask, what is that big building? It's always part of the case. But I think this position is going to be the position that really begins to set the town off into the 21st century for the growth and development, I think.
No argument, I'm just giving you a sense, it's a little question.
No, I think, you know...
Just a comment on what you said, and trying to sort of put this all in perspective here. Is a percentage of the job you're really thinking about is sort of special project work? So, I mean, you're talking about FEMA, and I'm thinking that took a lot of time and effort of a lot of people's parts, and you're not, you're not thinking that comes in over the, sort of the transom, and then you hand it off to this particular individual and have them run off on a special project, right?
No, it's not a special project at all. And the FEMA maps are actually going to be much more important in terms of development as far as the 1972 wetlands map and stuff like that, and trying to mesh those two together. So I don't see it as, I, actually, I'm worried that it's too much in that job description because I don't want too much so that the economic development aspect of it is lost because we have so much momentum there right now. And just to Bill's point, I mean, I made a choice, you know, in terms of this professional position versus support. You know, six years ago, a lot of the clerks in the buildings were working 25 and 30 hours a week, and we've slowly moved those up to 30 and 35 hours a week. But, yeah, we could use more staff at that level, there's no question. And we're so fortunate, particularly in conservation, building, and planning, that the support staff has additional expertise just from their background that offsets some of the workload for the professional staff. And that's a tremendous benefit we have that we're lucky.
And the other reason why I was saying, I use that as an example of how I know it fogged down the town to try to address it immediately because they had to do it within a certain appeal period. The way I see the position is that the person's going to be coming and looking at all the, I say proactively, prospectively, saying, all these issues, you know, people talk about the schools, that's another component that needs to be factored into this. Where are the numbers there? They need to be able to reach out to the school department and say, okay, where are the numbers going? Are we really talking about another school? We're talking about getting rid of the school? You know, what exactly is the projection for the next 30 to 40 years in conjunction with, what about maybe expanding the business district in Green Bush? Or what do we do with development on 3A? Is it really worth it? Is there really much there? Or do you begin to say, take First Parish? Do we go First Parish and take it down to Gate School? There's a lot of businesses there. Ideas that keep percolating and saying, how do we begin to take a look at this? So that that individual then can go back to the town and say, this is what we're looking at. You know, everybody always comes up with ideas, but we've already looked at it, or we're going to continue to look at it, and then take some of the other side, low-hanging fruit, like I say, the bike trails, you know, making some connection, you know? And then when these developers come in and they say, well, gee, you know, what can we do with some form of mitigation or some linkage? You know, you have that opportunity to say, this is what we really need. Can we take the waterfront with the waterways? And I'm not just looking at downtown Front Street. I mean, there's a real potential, you can look at North River, you can talk about seedbeds for oysters possibly there. But we also own half of Cohasset Harbor, it's all Situate. You know, there's all these moorings that Cohasset potentially is using that we as a town can maybe hold on to. The difficulty is, how do we get access to that because of law and private property? There are a lot of these potential ideas that can be generated, and I see that as the planning director's objective. So when I say task, no, but I mean...
You're thinking longer horizon stuff, yeah.
I think it has a great opportunity. I just hope that the residents see it. And, you know, obviously, I think from a resident's perspective, as well as this, an increase in taxes, no, it's not. And so what's the benefit that we have? And I think, I've seen it for the past 16 years that have been involved with zoning and on the Board of Selectmen, I think it's a really great opportunity.
Great. Anything else, Bill?
Yeah, a couple more points. One is, that's a tough job description. It really is. I mean, I read that about three different times, and you're looking at a lot of skillsets for one individual to have. All things being equal, we'll find for them or her. Two other points, kind of soft words for you. One is, measure success. How are you going to demonstrate that you've succeeded with this person?
Well, I think...
Or let me ask the question the same way. We're going to have the success, is how are we going to come back and maximize getting that, the results of that success throughout the community?
I agree, and I mean, I think that the feedback is multi-tiered. It's from residents and developers. I mean, our review process needs to improve. It shouldn't be this long. We should have as much as we can automated, and our GIS pieces stalled. And that's because not one person is charged with doing it. I'm very sensitive to the fact that it takes a long time to get a permit in this town. And that's not necessarily beginning and ending with the development review process. A lot of it's volume, and a lot of it is, you know, turnaround time for them. And I, you know, that would be a measure of success, that we're able to cut the review time by a certain period of time, or we'll be able to do more self-serve. I think that's an indicator of success. But it's also a leap of faith. I mean, we created the coastal resource officer position three years ago. We really didn't know what that would do because it pretty much didn't exist. And, you know, for $57,000 a year, that individual's brought in $8 million of grants. So, you know, I think the evaluative tools are there to know whether it's successful or not. I think my appointments in terms of our staff speak for themselves. We have a high threshold here for performance, but that would be the first indicator I'd see, Bill, is that we shorten the review time and that people have an opportunity to raise concerns with somebody other than, you know, the department head that's just trying to get ready for the next meeting.
Those who are involved in development would be that, but I mean, somebody in the West End, for example, that's not involved in development, just on a day-to-day basis. We need to make sure that success is measured and brought back to them.
Yep, you're right.
The last one I got is a real easy question for you, and that is, which, which part of the hallway are you going to put this person in, in the building?
Which closet?
So, actually, there's been a plan done for the last two years that bumps out the building department. If you've been into the treasurer collector's office in the last six months, you've seen that the whole back end of it is empty. There's a wall going up there, and that's going to become the new break room, and the building department is being bumped out. Anybody who's seen Neil and Bob Vogo sharing an office that's less wide than this table, that was there. So we have the space to accommodate it in this building, believe it or not.
Good. So I'm fully supportive. Thank you.
That's, but your question about evaluating, I think is a really good one.
Ready?
Yeah, just a quick question. I mean, I'm new to the planning board and still new to Situate. I know Laura's behind this, right? You back this time? But I was curious, are the selectmen all, can you speak for all five of they all kind of on board?
We have a retreat every year, and what we try to do is evaluate various issues. And this is an issue that's been going back probably seven years. And that's, I mentioned, a former selectman, Rick Murray, and I have both talked about it, but it wasn't the main issue that we were looking at. It's now come to that point, and so the full board, the board is fully supportive.
Okay. I'm just trying to soak in everyone's opinions because I'm still new, and I just want to know what everyone thinks, but if the selectmen are all behind it, that makes me feel good.
Advisory too, I think. They haven't formally voted, but they received it pretty warmly when it was presented a couple of weeks ago.
Well, I think, if I could summarize for everybody, you have our unanimous support. We think this is a job that, if done well, will really provide great benefit to the town. I think one of the things I would ask this individual to do is to keep an eye on, sort of boots on the ground too, and whether, you know, part of the reason that these permits don't get done as fast as people want is we're limited by the number of people we have to do the things we have to do and do them well, right? We can do them shoddily and fast, but we want to do them well and fast. And that would be kind of how I summarize it. I didn't, I didn't ask if there were any comments from the, from the public here, but I would, I would entertain them if you had them. Yes?
Colin McNeese with EDC, just to echo a lot of what I've heard. You ask a question about whether it would be useful to bump up support staff. From the EDC perspective, we don't have it. We've been stealing Laura's time for about five years, and it was one of our first...
So you're the culprit.
We proposed this in our first year, for a couple of years, until we sort of changed tact and started doing things ourselves. But it's not easy. We're also a volunteer group. It's difficult to move things. We need those legs on the ground. But when it gets down to it, if we were to bring somebody on, there's not an economic development issue in this town that also doesn't touch on the infrastructure, the sewer department, the health departments, our restaurants, and our retailers coming in for permits, brewery that came in having to deal with the health department and building codes. And, you know, all of these things touch all of these departments. And so it, to me, it makes sense to elevate that up to the department head level and gain that efficiency. I think this is a value add that allows you to pull a lot of those talents that we have in place at the support level in an organization. And I think, you know, to be able to have that proactive approach to things is exciting because I think you've seen some gardens, we're hoping, as a former planner, I'm not really into planning, I'd like to just implement. So we have this discussion of the EDC all the time. We're kind of done planning. We've got a lot of good ideas. We like to start making things happen. I think this is a good step in that direction.
And I have to say, EDC is implementing things. We are doing things. We are taking action. And we've accomplished, I think, in the last few years, a tremendous amount, but we can accomplish a lot more. And I, and to Colin's point, we need to bring them all on board. We need to have the Board of Health be more receptive, more approachable, the same thing with just everything. We all need to talk to each other. You know my mantra is communication, has always been. But no, I support this.
Okay. We had one other, two other comments, and then we're going to need to cut it off because we've got other business to do here, so.
Sure, just quickly, Steve Bjorkland. I've been developing in town for about 30 years, and about a year ago, I had approached the Board of Selectmen because the developers have had problems getting these permits and stuff like that. I appreciate the fact that Tricia's been able to find $85,000. It's my personal opinion that we really should put the boots on the ground first and support the Board of Health, the Planning Board, and Conservation, and whatever departments are out there now doing the work. And once we get that support, move forward if you want to have this position. I don't see putting this position first as being a benefit to the development field.
Thank you.
And then I just had a quick question, so forgive me, I'm new to these meetings, but...
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Derek Case, I live at 81 First Parish. And my question is, you know, with these funds that are being allocated, potentially allocated towards this new position, I was wondering if any other type of infrastructure investment or position were considered before landing on this role?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure I have to go with this question. So if this role, you know, did you consider any other types of roles, or if it hadn't been this role that you landed on for the $84,000, roughly $1,000, where would that money have gone? Was there another role that you considered opening?
It would have stayed with EDC. I mean, that's what we're trying to defend.
One more, you get the last word.
... Tricia Laverde, because I'm going to rebut Mr. Bjorkland's thesis in supporting town administrator, sure, he says that you can't like, you say 23 people, take somebody that burned it off, give it some help, put a non-alien general position that were then, you know, to instruct the boots on the ground with a really clear, concise idea of what's supposed to happen on the ground.
Thank you. I think we have unanimous agreement here. I don't know if you need an official vote, but you can go forth and use our...
Come to town meeting. So, great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Take a couple minutes?
Yep, we're going to take about a three, four-minute break here. Sorry for being a little late here. We've got on our agenda tonight to talk about 30 Whittier Drive, number seven and number nine Blanchard Farm Lane, stormwater issue. Do we have representatives from all sides here? How about the developers? Why don't you guys come on up?
So, my name's Jeff Assett. I'm a civil engineer with Morse Engineering. And with me is John Barry, John Kuduski, and John Ren.
Can I just make a distinction before we get into this? You know, as the developers, we were responsible for the roadway construction, the retention basins, and the pertinent infrastructure, but, you know, the individual lot development, we sold lots, and the individual builders who purchased the lots were given the order of conditions, were given the responsibilities of grading. So I think the issues that are being discussed tonight are specific to individual lot development. So I don't know, I'm happy to sit here, we're here for that, you know, the purpose to listen in and certainly be available to, to help remedy any issues, but we were not the individual developers on the lots that are being discussed tonight. We weren't the builders, I should say, on those lots. Happy to sit in and assist in any way that we can.
The builders were invited.
So John is here on behalf of the lot eight, lot seven, I'm sorry, with KNE Construction, and I'm here on behalf of the builder at lot eight.
Okay, great. I appreciate your comment. At the end of the day, we're just trying to get to the bottom of it so that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, you want to build development, and the idea was that we'd be able to manage the stormwater. And that, you know, we didn't say we'd manage the stormwater at the end when everybody built everything, we managed it all the way through the process, so that's what we're trying to accomplish.
We're going to do it, right?
Yeah. I appreciate that. Go ahead, Jeff.
So the reason we're here is that there is a puddle forming at the rear of lot eight. It's between the house and the stone wall, which defines the back property line.
That's this...
Yeah, that's a puddle. It's about 15, 20 feet off of the property line. And so we recognize there is a puddle there. It does not overtop onto the property at 30 Whittier Drive. It's contained on the Blanchard Farms lot. And I went out to the site today with Pat Brennan of Amory Engineering, who's your review engineer. And I also visited the site yesterday with Laura Harbottle. And so we looked at this puddle, and the most important thing is that it's not overtopping onto the lot at 30 Whittier Drive. The elevation of the stone wall is about eight inches higher, and then between the puddle and the house at 30 Whittier Drive, you can mount a septic system. And that septic's about two, two and a half feet above the elevation of the stone wall. And because it's elevated, there's a rubber barrier that wraps all, all the way around the whole thing. It's a vertical barrier. And that's working as, just, it, it's blocking any groundwater or surface water from going towards that house. I also pulled the test bits that were dug on that property in 2001, and they recorded groundwater at anywhere from 22 to 31 inches. So historically, it is very high groundwater. So historically, it is very high groundwater. We also went to the catch basin on Whittier Drive and looked at it, there's a PVC pipe aimed at the house on Whittier Drive, which implies there's likely a foundation drain or perimeter drain around that foundation. Again, historic high groundwater. The puddle that's shown in that photo, we did go back, Greg Morse from my office went back and looked at the puddle 48 hours later, and it was dry, so that's positive. And then we ultimately.
But Greg may have been wrong, that this wasn't intended to be a retention basin of any kind here.
Right. And what's, yeah, what's happening.
Supposed to direct stormwater to the, to the retention basin, right?
Yeah, the water was intended to flow at a very gentle slope along that stone wall in an easterly direction. And the lot immediately downgraded. Lot number seven is under construction right now. It's bare soil, and it's only rough graded. And what they did is they carried out the grade too far. And that grade needs to be lowered, and then the water will be allowed to flow. And it's really very minor grading. It's something that can be done when they're doing their final lominceding, when they have the equipment there, which they plan to do as soon as they can anyways. So I don't think the puddle is impacting 30 Whittier Drive, but I'm sure the owners that, on Blanchard Farm, don't want that puddle in their backyard. So we really want to alleviate it. And I've talked to John, who's the contractor next door, and everyone's kind of on board to fix that issue in this spring.
Okay. And Pat's not here tonight, right?
No, we thought Pat would be able to make it, but something must have come up for him.
Did you get his letter?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I just, just now got it, so I'm looking at it now. So please, just educate me a little bit on this, on the mounted septic system. Why doesn't the stormwater, why doesn't the groundwater continue to move under it?
Well, it has a rubber barrier around the entire perimeter.
To that, to what depth?
Below the existing grade.
Below the existing grade.
I don't know how deep they installed it when they did back in 2001.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't, wouldn't prevent groundwater from flowing?
Only ground, only groundwater is very high. It probably doesn't go, go very deep.
Right.
But you, even back in 2001, you had the groundwater table at only 22 inches down.
Right, but this is a mounted, for, for that particular reason, this is a mounted system, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. So is it, and this is, I need some education here, but is it possible that what we've done here with this, retaining this water, is having an impact on groundwater flow, driving it in a particular direction? And, and the reason I ask is that it appears, and we don't know, but it appears that this, that sort of the homeowners flooding in their basement is, sort of coincides with this event. And so is there another way that this could be happening?
I really think, don't think this is because we've eliminated so much of the watershed going to this point. So before the property was developed, this time of year, it would be all bare soil because the crops would already be harvested. And you had all the runoff from this entire property, as well as the backyards up on Curtis Street, flowing down the hill towards the houses on Whittier Drive. Now we've put the road down the middle, and the road intercepts most of that surface runoff and sends it to the detention basin out back. So right now, the only runoff you have going there is the backyards on the downhill side. It's such a smaller watershed. And, and again, I.
So this particular damming of, of the water, which it's not going anywhere, it's, right, it's contained as a, looks a little bit more like a lake than a puddle, but this couldn't influence groundwater flows in, in those particular areas?
I really don't think it's increasing the flows from what it was before construction because it's such a small watershed going to it. But, but that being said, we do want to fix it as soon as we can, and so there's not a puddle there.
Okay.
And I think we have a game plan to do so.
All right. Well, it'd be great to hear what the game, what is the game plan?
That would be, that's lowering the elevation on the lot downhill on lot number seven, where it's rough graded right now, it's not final graded. And what's happening is there, the water should be flowing out of that puddle and then down the property line behind lot seven. Instead, they've built up the grade there, probably eight, 10 inches, and it's damming it up. So when they have a bobcat in there in the springtime, and they're lominceding and in final grading, we have instructed them to, to remove that fill and regrade it in such a way to let the water keep going.
Is, is that something that's happening soon?
Um, yeah.
Sort of. Soon being what? What's your definition of soon?
Well, everything else on the property is done. They just couldn't get it done before winter, so.
So this is, this is the last thing that has to be done?
Yeah. Pave the driveway and get the final.
It could be done this month.
A lot of this is weather dependent for this time of year. I mean, we're supposed to get snow, temperatures nine degrees, you know, over the weekend at night, and make another dumping next week. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to lomincede right now.
Right.
It's also, I will say, the landscaping is, although grading and whatnot are my responsibility as the contractor, landscaping is not part of my contract, but that's something I work with the homeowners on to get, to get the landscaping and this lominceding, the very final, final type of grading is, is sort of a curfew of the landscaper. Done obviously with my input and knowing that there is an issue and there's a puddle over there, that, you know, it'll, it'll get addressed, but it's a little bit of me working with my homeowner to get that also.
And while Laura Harbottle and I were out yesterday, we actually spoke to the homeowner and explained to them.
Okay. Are they here? The homeowner? Sorry, I don't know your names, though.
Which property? Which property you're.
What is it, 30 Whittier?
Oh, yeah, no, I guess.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you told me about.
No, I was talking about the, I, it's, I'm interested in hearing sort of the, the other side, if you will, and I'm not, I'm not trying to create a controversy here, I just want to hear kind of, you know, what, what you're, you experienced and whether it's continuing to be experienced or not.
Sure.
So go ahead.
Well, this is my wife Jackie, and I'm Tom Quinn with the Butters. And on January 24th, when we had the rainstorm, it rained approximately 1.39 inches. And the standing water that the engineer's referring to as a puddle, I don't define that as a puddle. And this puddle was draining, flowing onto my property. And I have photographs of that, and it flooded my basement. And I have photographs of that as well. My wife called Ms. Harbaugh, and Ms. Harbaugh came out and viewed the flooding. And I believe she brought it to your attention. And I believe that's the reason we're here today.
It is. And it was a surface runoff? It was, that's what we were seeing? Is this, that's, that's what I'm, I'm not, I'm not drawing the connection here.
We can, so we're here. We have some.
One, one at a time, please.
This is my engineer, Mr. Hodge.
Matt Hodge.
Okay.
We actually have a bit of an analysis, sorry. I'm Kelly Smith, I work with Matt as well. We have a bit of an analysis that we would like.
All right. So hold on just a minute, and we'll get to you then. I would like to see if these gentlemen have anything else they want to add before we, we'll hear what they have to say. Anything else at this point?
No, not at this point. Thank you.
Why don't you come on up and give us the benefit of your knowledge?
Do you guys mind if I put something on the spin up board there? We have copies for you all to look at as well, but.
Will you be able to see it, our TV? Our cracked TV person?
I'm happy to hold it as well, if that's easier. Kelly's going to be.
Just sort of a bit, if you ever see.
Is that okay?
Sure. We can get some.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Do you think we could set?
Maybe Laura.
You're going to take it, yes.
Okay, so I got to figure out.
Just hold it up on the wall so we can make sure that Sam and Mark can see. You can get it, yeah.
At a good spot?
You going to nail gun in the back of your truck there, John?
Is it all right if I get going while they're hanging that up?
You just give them one second, so Laura can hear it too. Okay. You're on. Please identify yourself and.
Sure, certainly. As I mentioned before, my name is Kelly Smith, and I'm here with Matt Hodge, and we're working on behalf of Tom Quinn. Matt and I are both licensed professional engineers in the state of Massachusetts, and our, and our background is in water resources engineering. And we're here tonight, obviously, to discuss the issue with flooding on the Quinn property. So Mr. Quinn approached us following the January storm event when he had experienced the flooding along the back of his property line. And as you can see from the photos, if you actually flip to the third page that I gave you as well, you can see the, we'll call it ponding, but you can see the ponding on the back of the property line that he shares with the Blanchard Farm Estates. And you can also see some channelized flow that's going onto his property.
Okay, so photo one, we're looking from his property back towards the development.
Yes, exactly. And you can see, I mean, there's some gentle erosion, and it's pretty muddy, so the flow is definitely channelized onto his property at that location.
Gotcha. Okay.
So Mr. Quinn asked us to do some investigation to determine if, in our professional opinion, the flooding that he was experiencing was being exacerbated by the development of the Blanchard Farm Estates. And as we've discussed, he's also concerned about his septic system, which is near to that property line. So we did some review of the analysis performed by Morse Engineering. So we did some analysis of the, the documents that they had prepared for the development and looked at some of their subcatchment plans, pre and post, and I can bring that up to you guys as well, so people can talk to you about. So on the whole, we thought that the analysis was thorough and in accordance with industry standards, but we did have a bit of a question with regards to some of the assumptions that drove the stormwater analysis. Particularly, if you look at the post-development plan, which is the one on top there, subcatchment 1B, which is the one abutting Mr. Quinn's property, in the stormwater report, the assumption is that that entire subcatchment makes it all the way to design point one, which is in the northern, northwestern corner of the development site. And that's the, basically, the fundamental assumption that we found fault with. So if you look at, if you're able to flip to figure one, which is the first, first page that I had given you, this is where we had done some analysis of the existing elevations in that location. So the, the very colorful image in the bottom left is some LiDAR data that we extracted from the state. It's publicly available. And this LiDAR was flown in 2013 and 2014, so it, it predates the development. And we looked at this data and compared it to the site contours that were collected as part of the survey to get a sense of how they compared, and they aligned pretty well. The one discrepancy.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you there because I need to know what LiDAR data is.
Oh, I'm sorry. LiDAR. LiDAR data is elevation data that's, it's flown in a plane, and it's post-processed to remove trees and, and other obstructions to give you a pretty accurate sense of what the ground elevations are.
So the colors represent different elevations?
Yes, exactly.
And red is higher?
Yep, red is higher. I mean, we're only talking about six feet total in the color gradation here, but I wanted to, to key in and show the variability in the area that we're talking about. And the advantage of the LiDAR, well, for one, we didn't have a digital version of the plan that Morse Engineering had generated. But the other benefit is that this surface is continuous, so it gives us a more holistic picture of what's happening with the elevations. And if you look at the site plan that I've given you, the contours, which are those gray dashed lines, those end right at the beginning of the Quinn property and all the other Butters over there. So you don't really get a sense of the holistic topography in that area by just looking at the plan.
Okay. You mean on their property?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, if you, if you're able to look back at figure one, those other charts that you'll see are basically their transects that we took off of the LiDAR data to get a sense of what was happening in, I mean, I'll, I'll call it a ditch along that, along that line, but it's, it's really not acting as one particularly well consistently. So first of all, the slope is very gentle, and that's going to encourage ponding.
Consistent as well, right?
Yes, yeah.
But you actually have negative slopes occurring at different points where you would expect the water to be flowing one way, but the ground is actually sloped opposite to that.
So which, what am I looking at? This?
Top left.
The top left, that goes along the ditch.
Right, so.
And in a perfect world, that would be one line always going down, but it goes up and down in places, which is what creates the ponding.
Right.
Right, and that's stacked directly.
But this is before the ditch was.
Well, the thing is.
There was no grading.
The ditch hasn't been graded.
Okay.
Right, so according to the plans, the ditch is the same as, as it was predating the development. So it's not particularly conducive to conveying stormwater flow. And the transects that we cut, which are those two purple lines going across the colorful LiDAR, if you, if you look to those on the right-hand side, the first one on top, that is right where the Quinn property has the leaching field, so it's, it's mounted there, and you see a nice triangular channel where you could imagine stormwater flowing straight through it. The bottom one, on the other hand, where there was a bank in the top image, there's nothing. So that explains why flow is, is migrating directly onto the Quinn property, because there's no elevation to contain it. So the assumption that the watershed runoff reaching the ditch makes it to design point one, isn't completely capturing the picture of what's actually going on. And we saw that on January 23rd and 24th, when they took those photographs.
But ultimately, is the design to grade that ditch in a way that it does transfer water? Or am I, am I wrong here?
According to what they were saying earlier, the, the plan is to help with the grading beyond the Quinn's property. However, if you don't dig something down to properly convey flow at the point where it's spilling over into their property, they're going to continue to have a problem.
Good practice is a 2% grade to have a gentle slope on the turf-filled surface.
And it's. It's about 0.7% now, so it's, it's really conducive to ponding.
Okay.
On one hand, it was like this before the development, however, the other factors to consider is they've steepened the slopes around the houses, so the water's getting there more quickly. And because they've steepened the slopes and they've encroached more on that area where the water was previously ponding and infiltrating more naturally, now there's less space for the water to collect and infiltrate. So those two factors combined are having an effect and not working as they were probably intended to.
The only other thing maybe that we would add right now is that the rainstorm that happened was a relatively small storm.
Right. So Mr. Quinn had signed a number that I believe he had collected over a period of time in his rain gauge, but actually also pulled historical data from the nearest professionally managed gauge, which is on the Marshfield Airport. So on the third page, you'll see a table of numbers there. And so I'm comparing basically on the far right-hand column, those are the, the rainfall depths that were used in the stormwater report. And there's other resources available to get rainfall depth, so really any one of them is, is relatively fine for this sort of an analysis. But what's kind of important to note here is that the 2.3 inches that's highlighted in yellow, that's what was actually occurred during that storm event over a 24-hour period, and that's less than a one-year storm event. So they can expect this to recur statistically.
Is it 2.3 or 1.3?
2.3.
We wrote down 1.3.
I think Tom said that, and either collected it, or if you look at just January 23rd, or whatever the main day was that, that the storm actually extended on to a second day.
Right. So we looked at holistically the complete 24-hour event, and 2.3 is the number.
But they can expect much more water, much more erosion for a larger storm that may or may not happen next week or five years from now.
And what is, what is this page? What am I supposed to learn from this?
So I had mentioned a moment ago that the, basically what that figure is showing you, on top is pre-construction conditions, and then at the bottom is what can be seen in the most recent aerial imagery that's available. And I just wanted to show, basically, how those graded-in slopes encroach on the ditch that was previously able to infiltrate. So it's reduced by just over 40% in size.
Oh, because of the, because this has gotten skinnier, basically?
Exactly.
Okay, I got it.
May I add something?
You may.
Thank you. You took, this was recorded at the Marshfield Airport, and I think Mr. Quinn had in his rain gauge 1. what?
I think he had said 1.3--
I had 1.39.
Okay, so we'll call it 1.4. One of the things in this particular area, it can be raining in North Situate and not raining in North Marshfield.
Sure.
So it could have been a heavier rainstorm down at the airport, and it's not to mitigate or whatever what you're saying, but understand that it really is a variable.
Yes, it's very fickle, but actually, unless rainfall would further make our case, because that means he's gonna be experiencing these sorts of events even more frequently.
I think the point you're trying to make here is that if you use these as the design figures and you're designing for even a 10 or 25-year storm--
They're woefully--
You're gonna be in worse, much worse shape than what they already had.
I just, I think that the base assumption that the watershed would be draining along that ditch and ultimately get to the design point, that's just not what's occurring. And this is, these are the reasons why.
But it seems like it could occur if we were to come in and actually sort of grade that ditch to the proper slopes and all of that, right?
Right. But just fixing Lot 7 might not be adequate to completely resolve the problem.
And I have to admit, I haven't looked at the stormwater plan in quite a while. Was part of the construction process to grade that ditch?
Not to my knowledge, and not to what's shown on the plans.
There are no proposed contours on the plans shown in the ditch.
So it was the existing-- It was the existing, okay. Okay. Questions?
How do we fix it?
It sounds like we have to regrade that area. And I mean, sort of holistically, not just individual rock, right? I mean, that's what, that's what the conclusion sounds like to me. I mean, I'd be happy to take, you know, kind of alternate input on that, but I don't know, Jeff, are you hearing this for the first time?
I am. But I do think a solution could come up with, for work. I walked in, looked at it with Pat Brennan, who agrees and states on his letter. So I think we should regrade Lot 7 properly as soon as the ground is thawed, kind of take it from there.
I think what's being suggested is 7 may not be the total answer.
Correct.
7 is downstream, it's farther down from us.
Right.
We're major about a ton lot eight, we're going, that huge weight there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not someone who really just, I don't sense the legal piece of this, but if taking it from there means waiting for them to have additional flooding, that seems like an undue burden on the point.
I would have to agree. I would have to agree that we ought to get to the bottom of this and have a plan to fix it. Yes?
Can I come up and show you on the paper and the photos?
Sure.
So the puddle is forming right here. The Quinn's house is here.
It's a little hard for, it's gonna be hard to show everybody this, but is it possible to sort of stand over here? We'll try to look at it from the distance.
Yeah, so I apologize.
I think it's more important the engineers look at it.
But this is, this is number seven, lot eight here.
Will this help? Will this help to use this, a bigger picture?
Where's the camera?
Right there, in the back, and right there.
So the puddle is forming right here.
We can't see that.
Right here, to the rear of this lot. The Quinn's house is, I'll hold this up after I sketch it. The Quinn's house is approximately there, but they're mounted septic in between. Quinn's house is there, but it's mounted septic in between. What has happened is the grading on the lot next door has extended through this area, and the grade is too high there. The grade is too high there. And the intent was, prior to construction, all of the runoff from the backyards of Curtis Street and then the cornfield flowed down this hill towards Whittier Drive, and there was a small natural swale that carried the water in this direction, I guess northerly along the stone wall. In large events, I'm sure you did have water overtop of the stone wall. So the problem now is that the water can't continue to go along that, along that stone wall because of this mounted-up area right here. And-- I'm looking for a copy of Pat Brennan's report of the photos. Do you have that?
Here are the photos.
Actually, Pat Brennan's photos.
These aren't his photos? These aren't them? These are them?
The front one is mine, but all the rest are Pat's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Now I'll give her a back deal.
I sort of, I get the idea that there's sort of this unnatural dam there right now. I guess what I'm asking you to sort of think about is what they presented here, which is that the natural swale isn't sufficient enough to handle even, even a one-year storm, much less maybe a 5, 10, or 25-year storm. And, you know, I think that, I think the point that you're making, and forgive me if I'm paraphrasing incorrectly, is that the natural grade isn't sufficient in order to handle all those rainstorms, and that we would end, even with, if we remove the dam, if we get the five-year storm, or the 10-year storm, or whatever, we're gonna repeat the same problem we have. I think that's what you're telling us, and that's the one that I think we need to think about, if you're in agreement with that.
We'd like to bring it back to the natural conditions.
Well, can I just interrupt for once? I want to bring you through, because in developing, you've changed the natural conditions, right? So something that may not have been a problem prior to development may now be a problem, right? In that there was much more space for infiltration over a larger area previously, now that water's concentrating faster in a smaller area. So it's not the direct thing that you developed, but it is a result of the development that you did that is now needs to be addressed with further development.
Right, and the idea was that all of that collected stormwater would flow down this channel to the retention basin on the northeast side, or whatever it was.
Not to the basin, but to where it out, to where the outlet is.
Yeah.
So the area where the natural berm is really hasn't been altered. You can see this is, that's where it's puddling right there, and then this area is unaltered. It comes up, we're saying at the stone wall, it's about eight inches higher, and then you see their septic is about two feet higher.
Because this has been, I'm sorry--
Just let him finish, and then we'll take your--
So this, this area really is unaltered. This is the area right here where, once we pull this back, we're looking to pull it back to the natural conditions and restore that, and then it will carry on the way it did prior to any construction.
Right, I think that, I think the point that I'm hearing here, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the point that I'm hearing here is that the natural condition, given the change in development around the area, has resulted in a different sort of velocity-flow regime that requires maybe a graded contour as opposed to just the natural contour that's there right now. And I think that's what you're trying to point out here, is the natural contour is really kind of one of these things, right? And that it has to go a pretty long way as it's collecting water.
It also never really was channelized going by the Quinn property.
To our knowledge, right.
Right.
What do you mean? When you say "channelized," then--
So we're calling it the natural channel that would convey flow to the previous, you know, the design point that was modeled. However, there never really, beyond their leaching field, there was always that sort of downslope that would have taken flow onto their property. However, with the way the slopes have infringed and the way, there's now less of that space to infiltrate. So in, I guess in conclusion, I agree with you that there needs to be some more grading.
And one, I think, important point to make is that, because a stone wall is not impervious, like a natural stone wall, water will flow through that. So just because that represents a higher grade will not prevent water from flowing through that stone wall.
Right, and we have, we have sort of evidence that it's flowing, at least in that one, one rainstorm, it flowed through and around that stone wall?
Yeah.
Yeah?
There's leaves, a lot of debris there, a lot of stuff. What the Quinn's sold is, was they left there to try and protect their property, but none of that will provide protection from the flowing water.
Okay.
It's right where the end of the storm, of the rain leaching field meets our existing backyard, and that stone wall has, you know, kind of crumbled over the years. That's where the main water flow is coming through. And Laura was kind enough to come out that day in that day. She saw the water coming all through the back. She stepped over into inches of water on the other side to take photographs, but it clearly was flowing right where that break is, sort of where our leaching field flows down, and it comes through this big tree there.
Yeah, that's this photo one, right? But it's this one that it's coming through, right?
Well, this is where it's coming through. It's coming through--
Is that, is that--
Feel free to flip through the book. This shows you--
I'll get, very quickly get disoriented, so--
This is where my house is.
So this is the water from the--
This is coming from--
Was this the same event?
This is coming from Blanchard's.
Was this the same day?
Yes.
The same day, yeah.
Let me see if I can orientate.
Yeah, there it is.
That's the one we have.
That's the one we have, right?
I think.
And this is my house here. And this is a picture of-- That's the right-hand side, and it shows you, it's almost like a river.
Sure, I got it.
This shows you migrating through the leaves, which I kind of pulled up there. And you can orientate yourself with the rock. And there's the house and the mound, and there's the driveway, and you can see the pond.
This is the pond, right?
Yeah.
Got it.
That's gonna give you a better idea.
Okay. That's good, thank you. So--
So Kim?
Jeff has one more thing?
Sure. Just two things to add, I wanted to compare.
No, I said one, but you can add two.
The surface area pre and post going to the lots on Whittier Drive, that's what I was trying to explain back earlier, I think it shows a little better. The highlighted areas show what area it's going towards, the lots of Whittier is substantially less. And we do take into consideration the time, it's called the time concentration. And then secondly is, in Pat Brennan's report, he does conclude in the last sentence that he agrees with the approach, and it would alleviate the puddle on lot eight.
Yes.
Thank you, and I was pretty much gonna speak to that point. I just, again, we're here to be a part of a remedy. Certainly, we don't want to see anybody getting any additional water post-construction versus pre-construction. But I just, I think it's important to note that, as Jeff just pointed out, a road was constructed that basically ran right down the middle of this property. Prior to construction, the watershed from Curtis all the way to Whittier drained, there was a field that was, that was basically a cornfield that was open gravel. And we have, I'm sure Karen could find the notes from our initial construction meetings, that an abutter from Whittier Drive commented that white caps came across that field. And all of that, entire field drained onto Whittier Drive. So to suggest that, you know, that post-construction we've adopted a more intensive introduction of water to Whittier than prior to construction, I think probably can't be proven scientifically, and that's why we have engineers to do this. But we're taking all of the watershed that is south of the road, all the lots are now seeded, grassed, all the roofs are being recharged, and substantial infiltration systems on each lot. The retention basin is on the down-grading side of all but one of the lots on Whittier, beyond the folks that are currently being affected. So I just want to make sure that you understand that, you know, that the watershed situation, I believe, and again, I'm not a scientist, but it seems that we've pushed most of the water away from Whittier, and it does seem that we might have graded what we can accommodate and make this, make this right.
It does, it does sound like there's grading to be done here. I think the question is how extensive, right? Because the design is designed based on that one catchment area, right? The 1B, or whatever you called it, right? So just taking whatever that water is and trying to manage it onsite as opposed to having it run offsite, right? And we obviously had at least one case where that didn't work. And I guess I'm just trying to get to the bottom of, you know, is this, is what these folks have presented, you know, compelling enough to take a look at the grading along the entire back there and say, do we need to, do we need to do something to make sure that in the 10 or the 25, or, you know, hopefully not the 100-year storm, that, you know, we're not creating not just ponds, but lakes and rivers, right? So, so, you know, I have engineering documents in two different directions, I guess, and just trying to bring that to a closure, so we can try to address the root of the, you know, the root, actually, it's not the problem, it's the, it's the symptom, right? It's what happens. People are getting their, you know, getting water in their basement, right? And they're flooding, flooding their lots, so--
If you cut the grade eight inches, the water will not stand and be moving, and will not overtop into their Whittier Drive.
I hear what you're saying.
I think that the engineer, the town engineer, has some way here as well, and he's standing behind our engineer. But it all boils down to just cutting eight inches out, and as we all know, water doesn't flow uphill.
Right, right.
So we've got, we've got an eight-inch problem here is what it is, and just make that minor cut, it's all about it.
Well, I guess what I hear, I think I hear, I'm hearing from you, though, is that that's not the case, that it, that just that, that one regrading on that one lot may not solve the problem for the larger storms here, so--
It will reduce the amount of water flow in that swale by, you know, probably 75, 80% from what was existing, pre-existing.
I do think it's important to note, though, I mean, we still haven't had a full growing season, like I know eight Blanchard, they seed at that late in the fall, so you don't have fully established lot. You do not have any lot established on number seven. So I mean, that's obviously a determinant as well, in terms of sheeting, flowing. But yeah, we're, you know, here to, you know, hopefully work to--
I don't want you to have to do any more work than you have to, but I also don't want to--
It's not, I mean, it's not really gonna be, it's not even that at all, because I don't think it's a substantial amount of work. But unfortunately, at this point, you know, there are three different posses that, three different deeds and three different owners that we need to coordinate with, and I think they're all gonna cooperate to accommodate this and accomplish this.
Okay.
I just, to follow up with the eight-inch cut, I just, I'm not necessarily saying that that won't be adequate, I just think that you need to take a holistic look at the grading all the way back to where their leaching field berm ends and where water is entering their property. So I'm not sure exactly where the lot will install for the new development, but that's sort of my overarching point with the channel grading beyond their property. And can I ask a follow-up question regarding the watershed delineations?
You may, I'm not sure I can answer. I'm not sure I can answer.
Well, I would actually be more, but I was just curious where the infiltration basin on the southern side of the property, we're calling Design Point Two, where does Design Point Two ultimately go?
Which one's Design Point Two?
Oh, yeah, it flows onto the southern, southern end of Whittier.
This is Design Point One down here. It's really whether all of the rain that collects in here will ultimately just keep going this way as opposed to starting following it down there.
Assuming that worked naturally, what we've done is we've altered the timing of the water coming down.
Yeah, particularly with these heavy slopes like this, right?
Because that was it when they put them at the house. The house wasn't built. They moved the house back and then they increased that slope.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer.
He said that it goes between the property lines. Can I get up and show you?
Sure.
We have a little overlap in the two years of construction.
Yeah, I did look at the stormwater report and there was a small amount of overtopping during the two-year event, but I would agree that it wasn't very much. We're just talking about where this ultimately discharges. And I was curious if they had looked at if, you know, if it went this way or actually this way as well. And they're saying that it goes here, so, without more information.
Okay.
Let that one go.
So, any other, any other input on this at this point? Yeah?
Just, just to follow up, in one of Mr. Barry's comments, he indicated that all of the impervious areas in the rooftops were being recharged into the ground, and that's incorrect. The house directly behind me, all of the downspouts are discharging onto the surface in the front of the house.
In the front of the house. So, where's, is that going to 1B?
And on the right-hand corner, on the right-hand corner of the house, it's sloped downhill. So, that downspout is discharging on the surface and flowing down towards my property.
Did that run towards the road?
It's not going towards the road.
Were those supposed to have catch faces?
They're all supposed to be in drywells.
Does anybody know?
I believe it was only the downspouts in the rear that were supposed to be tied in. And we did do an annual plan for that. And it was reviewed by Henry and Vincent Goff.
It sounds like there might be one that's maybe not going in the direction you were hoping it was going to go? Is that what I'm hearing? On the corner?
The house that Mr. Barry built, his downspouts go into drywells. The house that Mr. Welby built, his downspouts do not go into drywells in the front of the house. I think Mr. Barry would be able to speak to that.
I'll be honest with you, it's the first I knew of it. And I would, I'd have to defer to the engineer. I mean, I did put, and I knew that as a matter of practice as a builder, I put them into drywells, but if it was not a requirement and if we're not part of the stormwater, I would have to defer to the engineer.
But you were present at the Butters meeting with Mr. Tedeschi and Mr. Morris, and that was one of the things that you told us. Driveways would be in the front and downspouts would be in drywall, recharging the surface.
Again, I would have to speak to the design engineer and the way that I brought you with the modern engineer.
No.
As you said, they are in drywells, and I wasn't aware that they were in drywall.
The other, the other houses that were built are in drywells. Mr. Welby's houses are not.
Everybody on the street, on every side of the house, in this development, has their downspouts in the ground in the front. Mr. Blesky is the only one that has that. Now, I want to know why.
Question for the engineer.
That's what grades to the street. They certainly don't have to.
I live on Whittier Drive. I've been president here for 60 years.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Mrs. Quinn, the 210 year drive.
Thank you.
And my son's house, I'm having the same problem behind mine. And when I went to the meetings and everything, I was told that these certain things would be done. One of them was, and I remember going to all of them, that number one, that all the downspouts would be in the ground. That's what you told us, and that's what we expected. And now that isn't happening. Also, Mr. Barry, you did a right thing in your house, the house you were very nice, the best house in the world. You left vegetation behind your home, which was supposed to be done. That wasn't done, and I was watching carefully when Mr. Blesky was building my house. Vegetation that was there was good privacy for me. I wouldn't have any other problem. And I watched carefully, but one time I didn't watch, he came with his big bucket and took all of that vegetation away. He went beyond the less work area. And then he promised me, this is what I'm dealing with, after 60 years, and my catches, all my privacy was taken away from me. And then the builder came to me, admitting that he didn't like it, and promised me he was going to make me happy. He was going to give me 10. I can't think of the words to know. No. Hemlocks. He was going to give me 10 hemlocks. He was going, this is what I'm listening to. He's going to separate them all along the boundary. He's going to do 10. He's going to let me look at the, and he's going to pass me the space on it. And if I didn't like that, he was going to give space on my eyesight, and if I needed more, he'd try to give that to me. That's what he wanted to do to make me happy. That never happened. I expect someone to tell me and to do something that they're going to do it. What do I have for hemlocks? Some little bushes. And I'm trying to deal with him. My daughter took over because I had a fall. She's been in, and I think Karen spoke to you.
Well, if you would, if you would just take that up with the, with the builder and follow up on that.
And to be fair, I mean, these are, I'm not aware of this until right now. I mean, I'm happy to get on the phone and talk to Don and see if we can, if things are made.
No, he did call me back after you did that. And then I told him what I wanted to do. First thing, when he came over and told me, I went up to Everbloody Place, and they said they couldn't give me any because it was gone, but they gave it to me in the fall. And I told him that, and he said, okay. And I said, I'm going to give the designer to help me find out what I need to do. And he agreed with that. My daughter is still in conversations. And I have plenty of emails, and I'll show it to you.
Okay. Could I ask that we, you know, just sort of take this conversation offline and maybe do it one-on-one here? If you would follow up?
Understood. And I think, to summarize, we have, you know, apparently some issues along the back property that needs to be addressed. And it is several different deed owners there. I think John and I, again, you know, we're here to see if we can help facilitate that. And we will see what we can do in terms of coordinating the three different property owners. And how can we have those conversations?
All right. The other thing is, there's a downspout in the back of this house on my complex that I brought to Mr. Harold about it not being done. I gave him a picture. After everything was done, what was missing?
I think that's the one we were just talking about, right? Okay. And you're going to look into that one, too? Okay.
All right. I'm going to leave because...
Great. Thank you.
I'm tired.
I hear you.
My son has gone to a lot. His salt is flooded. And he's been there too, and no one seems to be caring about this.
Well, that's why we're all here.
That's why I came here, and that's why he has an engineer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we've had a fair amount of input here. I would, sort of my suggestion here, and I'll throw it out to my members here to really discuss, is that obviously we need to get the lot that's not graded, you know, to clear that grading out. But it sounds like to me we ought to take a hard look at the overall grading from in this subcatchment B to make sure that swale will drain water across, you know, any size storm that it's designed for. I think this was designed to the 100-year storm, right? Yeah. So, I don't know what that entails on your end, but I think we need to try to address this issue so we don't end up with, you know, everybody here the next time the five-year storm comes by and then the 10, et cetera. That, that would be sort of my suggestion, but...
I think that sooner than later.
Yes.
Sooner. And I understand that there's an event coming in on Tuesday, which would preclude...
Maybe.
Maybe. But I would think that, because it is March and things don't last very long in March, that rather than waiting to seed and loam and all the rest of it, get in there within the next few days and take that dam out of there. In other words, that seems to be the bugaboo at this point.
I'm hearing that's not the bugaboo.
Well, it's one of, but it's one of, it is preventing the flow from going down the back because that, they dumped fill. I mean, did we not hear that?
Yeah, it's eight to 10 inches higher than it should be.
So, that needs to go, even if you have to go in there tomorrow with a shovel, to get it out of there. And then, if there is a drain pipe that needs to be put in place, do it. And if there needs to be drain pipes in the front of the house into a drywall, why wasn't it done and should it be done? I mean, these are things that should be done. We can't infringe upon other people, and that's what we're doing. And we have to stop. And it has to be done in a timely fashion now. And I would like to see that all of this is done on before the end of this month. And I'm not talking about looming and seeding or any of that stuff. I'm talking about the flow that goes down to where it's supposed to and do it and do it right.
Any other comments?
No, I agree. I'd like to see the grading issue taken care of and the downspouts looked into if it's been done wrong. I think time is going to, with vegetation growing back in and grass, too, we need that to happen. But, yeah, some of these things can be addressed pretty quickly, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that's what's got to be done. I'm just not so sure that what, two weeks from now or two weeks after it's done, I'll come back looking at some other blockings that's there. I'm not sure how to get at that.
Well, I think Ann might have a point, that the one we know of, we can eliminate. It's one lot.
Immediately.
Clear that out, right? And then, as we get into the spring, we ought to come back and look at the entire grade there and make sure that ultimately, you know, any design-sized storm is going to be dealt with. And it's probably, it may be worth your while to take a look at what, what these folks have done. I know you just got it today, but that seems, it seems compelling to me that, that we need to make sure that that works in all of the design conditions. That was the design of the stormwater system, and we should make it, make sure it's going to function that way. And we don't want to experiment storm by storm. So, that would be my suggestion as well. Is that, is that something that's feasible?
I'd certainly take that back to my business partners and the homeowner and huddle up with them and let them know what's been discussed here tonight and work with the engineers to, to make progress on that, yeah.
Because it sounds like just temporary clearing of it will at least take care of any sort of immediate issue, but it sounds like there's a longer-term issue that it may fall to.
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if there's a bigger issue, then that's part of the bigger solution than that's, that's not something necessarily I can comment on.
Right. No, I'm just asking for that one lot that we remove the dam, if you will, even if we can't loam and seed it right now.
Once the fill is pulled out, too, I can take a closer look and shoot some elevations out there. Make it function the way it should.
That's, I don't, I don't think we need to, any motions or anything else, right? You've got all that?
I think between the two of us, yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave it to Laura to coordinate with all of you, make sure we, we get progress on that. And I, I would like to know, once you've looked at everything, what the game plan is and, you know, as long as you're communicating to Laura, the rest of us will get informed from her. And maybe we'll have another, another seance a few months from now, and I'll be happy here.
It should really only be a couple hours.
Yeah, it seems like that.
Travel out eight inches, the material move it, grade it, you know, two hours max.
Right. And then, when you get to that point where you can actually seed it and, you know, vegetate it so it stays there, that'll be the key, right?
And don't forget...
You want to get this done.
Right. Immediately. And don't forget the downspout. Don't forget.
Well, I was also under the impression, and we've had many, many, many conversations about downspouts, that the downspouts in the back were intended to be infiltrated into drywells. The ones in the front were intended to flow across pavement to the street or across a lawn towards the street.
Towards the other drainage area, yeah.
From there towards the...
That's always been my understanding.
Yeah. So, it sounds like you may have a downspout that's like right on the corner there that's actually going one way instead of the other.
There may be one or two, there are critical locations that could go either way that should be infiltrated.
Okay.
And I really appreciate that we were finally able to get the ones in number nine because that took a lot of effort and it was finally done.
Great. Thank you. I hope, I hope, you know, six months from now, everything's done and, and we're, we'll forget all about this.
And hopefully a lot sooner than that. We can only hope.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We're way behind the times. We have a Form A?
Actually, we don't, boss.
Huh?
Actually, we don't.
I'm sorry you have to go through those studies.
They did a nice job on the engineering. Very nice analysis.
Yeah. Okay, Paul, you're up. We're way behind, so let's rock and roll.
Excuse me. Can you guys take the conversations outside?
Okay, let's try it again.
The Form A you have in front of you is for the creation of three house lots on Manhill Road. Lots one and two have been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Lot Three is a lot that would be a lot as of right as it meets all the conventional dimensional requirements for a house lot. There are no wetlands on the site. And we just ask that you endorse the plan.
Laura, did you have any, have anything on this?
This is the Manlot.
Yeah, Manlot. Or Manhill, I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you.
Lots have a required frontage. We just...
Looks like the upper end, 40,000, 40,000, and 23,000.
Yeah, there's one 50-foot frontage lot where we do have a position.
Yes.
Two of them, right?
Yes.
Or is it just one?
Yeah, two.
One of them has 50.
One of them has 50, one of them has, let's see...
The other one has 98.
98.
98, so that's also 50.
Yeah. So, these are both...
Yeah, those are double.
They're both double-scented.
They all have a solid family house on it. And there's no...
And so, the zoning board decision applies to these two lots?
Those two.
Okay. Okay.
Where's the motion?
Got a motion?
I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in the town of Situate, Mass, Manhill Road by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant slash owner Robert Terrell, administrator of the estate of Patsy Jo Terrell, dated 1/6/17, as the division of land is not a subdivision because lots one through three, as shown on the plan, have access and frontage on Manhill Road, a public way. Lots one and two have received a special permit filed with the town clerk on March 6, 2017, to create two lots with a minimum of 50 feet of frontage designated as Lot One and Two.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're good to go. Okay.
I'm sure we will see you again, Paul. I'm sure we will see you again.
I hope so.
All right, Laura, new language for temporary.
Okay, we have a little bit of new language. We have bounced things around between Tricia and myself and town council. And I talked to town council yesterday, there were really just a couple of things that needed to be changed. It's more smoother with the process if we just change what we already had rather than reinventing the wheel. So, instead of Cannabis Advisory Board, I think it's Cannabis Control Commission. And then, the language about licenses that the town would issue was taken out because that's not clear that the towns will be able to issue any licenses or not. And those are the two changes that, that he made. And tomorrow, I'm going to a workshop, weather permitting, I'm going to a workshop in Worcester on recreational marijuana and moratoriums and all of these related issues. And Brandon Moss is going to be there. I'm just going to hand him a copy of this and get him to look at it right there. And hopefully, he's off the clock and we don't have to pay him.
Okay.
So, there may be a couple more tweaks that he wants to learn. But I did come up with a little motion for you all, just to, just to say that you can really approve this. And where it's town council, it's kind of not really a big...
Am I right in understanding that towns can actually vote to ban the use?
Yes.
Well, Westboro just did.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
So...
But this is temporary moratorium.
Yeah.
And people can still smoke it and grow it, but...
Well, it's supposed to be medical.
Medical, yeah. I think recreational is the one they could opt out of, right?
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Ready.
I move that the planning board approve the minor changes to the zoning amendment for temporary moratorium recommended by Brandon Moss Town Council, and post these in the offices of the planning board and the town clerk, which is the proposed zoning amendment for temporary moratorium on sale of recreational marijuana.
That was second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was quick. How about a county?
Yeah.
There's a ton of it. Starting to get credit notices.
I move to approve the requisitions to Tracy Sales, fifty-six twenty-five, the toner for the OCE Large Carbeer, for two hundred and three dollars seventy cents, to Merrill Corporation for review of as-built for thirty-three Dreamwall Road, for fifteen hundred sixty dollars, to Merrill Corporation for review of stormwater for forty-three Otis Place, Lot Two, for one thousand five hundred sixty dollars, to Merrill Corporation for review of stormwater for forty-three Otis Place, Lot One, for one thousand five hundred sixty dollars, to Merrill Corporation for review of stormwater permit for twenty-four Linda Lane, for two hundred forty dollars seventy-eight cents, to Amory Engineers for review of the stormwater permit for twenty-four Linda Lane, two thousand nine dollars four cents, to Gatehouse Media NE for legal ads in the Situate Mariner, for ninety-seven Edward Foster Road, and Summer Street Scenic Road Hearing, and for three hundred seventy-one twenty-five to Amory Engineers for stormwater review at one eighty-first Parish Road.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, how about minutes?
Does everybody have to sign this?
Just you.
Oh, joy. Okay. Okay. Move the minutes of February twenty-third, 2017.
No changes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the eighth on reports.
EDC, we're just moving forward. We're going to spend a little money to be in the pocket guide because it's benefits business. We're going to try and put, we are putting together a meeting, public meeting, at some time in early May to talk about visioning for Green Bush by the public. We've endorsed the planning development position, and so it goes.
Okay.
CPC, we're meeting on Monday. The only thing I'm not quite sure about, because I seem to be the one that's involved, with the dog park. Anything further on that puppy?
I got the new letter from, we had a letter from Tricia committing the town to ten percent of the costs, and we got that, even though there hasn't been any CPC vote or whatever. We have that, and it's, we're just kind of massaging different ideas so that that one is the one that they get at the Stanton Foundation. And then, we're going to have some adjustments to the budget that's being given to the Stanton Foundation, so that hopefully they approve it and they give us the ninety percent. They're not as easy as they have been in former years.
Yeah, things have changed.
Things have changed dramatically, but...
Okay. All right, you're up, Laura.
Okay, the open space plan, we're continuing to work on that. And we all had a program on the public records law where we got more information about the town's new process for dealing with that. A couple of other department heads and I met with someone from CCM about a public access guide for access to the water, which is kind of a cool thing. They're going to have interactive maps that are online. And out of that came an idea that I think, Ann, you might be interested in because it's kind of an EDC-related idea, to have a page on the town website that's all about the beaches, all about kind of promoting the beaches, talking about where you need a sticker, where you can get a non-resident sticker, all of that, and, and some great photography to just kind of pump up that Situate's a cool place to come to. We've got these wonderful, amazing beaches, et cetera.
Et cetera.
Very cool. Okay. I'm entertaining Bill's motion then.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.